We convene to open meeting.
Certification of closed meeting, whereas the Akimak County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an permanent record vote and in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas section two point one dash thirty seven seventy one D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be resolved that the Akimak County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters authorfully exempt from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Let's all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the honest states of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Something like information about the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda from oh seven sixteen twenty twenty four.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Um, is there a motion on minutes for the last reading?
I've moved that we approve the minutes from those six eighteen twenty twenty four meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. And the vouchers, do anybody have any questions about the vouchers?
I do regarding some buses.
Still any vouchers?
Think they it was regarding the, I guess it was activity buses, is that correct? Do we feel we need those at this moment, I mean, is that coming out of the excess of twenty four million that we?
That's coming out of Medicaid funding, and we originally bought two, you're talking, okay, so we have the two.
Beck, would you mind coming up to the?
We had originally purchased two, and at one point we were using it for Rivermont, and we are still using one of them for Rivermont, but we found that we need a bigger bus for Rivermont, which is on order, and it's not a regular school bus, it's kind of like in between, but it will be yellow so it can stop on the road, I thought that this went out, but anyway, so we had the two and we heard from transportation how much they were using them for midday runs or golf trips or scholastic bowl type things, and a lot of, like I said, the midday runs are they're bringing the ECSE kids back or the special ed or whatever, and we ordered two more because they felt like they, you don't need a CDL to drive the activity bus, so they felt like they were saving money because we were not putting the miles on the big buses that are huge and get low gas mileage, and we had much better availability to find drivers to drive them since you do not need a CDL. Like, we have somebody going to take a cosmetology test, she can drive the bus with her, her girl's, our boy, on there, sorry, to, you know, to take the test, so they were being used so much that transportation wanted as many as they could get, so we got two more.
For the new folks here, don't we pay a certain number of buses in each budget?
Right, but the, those are regular operating buses.
But just so everyone knows.
Yes, yes, these are not in place of, of bus replacement.
Okay, then these buses didn't go repurchasing each year?
We typically, depending what the price is and if the, the mix on if they want specialized buses versus a regular bus, because there's at least a twenty brand differential, we usually get about six.
So, we got about six yellow buses?
That we will be getting, but we're looking at some of these fourteen, eighteen month turnaround, so, um, you know, we're, we still haven't gotten back to receiving them on time since COVID.
And then these aren't?
And we can receive these.
And this is off the medical, right?
Right, correct.
And it's, and I guess that's allowed to use the medical?
Yes, because we had never done this before, and you, we have the supplement but not supplant issue, so this is not something like, oh, we're, we're using this to, to add to our fleet, no, this is a new thing we've done just with that money.
Thank you for this question, thank you.
Are there any other questions about vouchers? Is there more about vouchers?
I move to approve the vouchers as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Personnel list.
Madam Chair, I have moved that we approve the personnel list as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can we comment? Did anyone sign up for a comment?
No, there's nobody on.
So next up we have a group of policies, seven point oh one through seven point oh eight, does anybody have any questions?
Madam Chair, I do.
Yes.
Regarding the small purchasing?
Yes.
I guess they're wanting to move it up to three hundred thousand, I guess without needing order approval, I'm not really, I'm not really keen on that, personally, I'd rather see it down to a hundred, and move it down to a hundred. The action. Any discussion on that?
Yes.
How would you say that, what's that money needs to work on?
In a variety of things.
Like what?
For example?
For example, painting our schools, so we get quotes from, we get quotes from whatever vendors Mr. Bennett can find, we know we can spend up, we know, Mr. Bennett knows the conditions of his schools and which schools are the worst, we know we can spend up to two hundred thousand dollars based on those quotes because of the previous policy was two hundred thousand dollars, so that's an example of what we were used that for. Typically, we can utilize cooperative procurement agreements and or piggyback clauses on other bids or RFPs released by other divisions or localities in the state, but if, in the absence of a cooperative procurement and or piggyback clause on an existing RFP, this small purchasing policy, what, which is V S B A, this is, this is not us specifically, that's out there to, you know, when you have a seventy million dollar budget, it is limiting, so, to not be able to spend more than one hundred thousand or even two hundred thousand, so, right now, we have paint projects going on that are coming in just under two hundred thousand because of that small purchasing policy, because a local painter's not going to have a cooperative procurement agreement, nor is, is that painter going to be a member of an organization that's a cooperative procurement, so that's the most ready example that we have just done that I can bring.
So, so how many times do you use the three hundred thousand, just for purchasing?
We've never used the three hundred thousand.
Well, hey, we're two hundred, sorry, so you spent two hundred thousand today, and then spent two hundred thousand tomorrow, losses start?
No, 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 it is, it is, if there is a project, you cannot break it down into segments, if it's like one concerted effort like the painting is, okay, so once upon a time, we used it for paving, now we have, we have competitors, we have competition in paving, we no longer use it for paving, we bid it and we bring it to you, but there's a number of areas, especially in, in facilities, Mr. Bennett's area, that we cannot find more than one vendor to, to do the job, okay, I'll, I'll give you another example, we have a folding wall petition at Chicago Elementary School, it's terrible, we cannot find anybody to repair it, we have found a contractor that can do it, it's ninety eight thousand dollars, we can do that because of small purchasing, we have searched and searched and searched and tried to find, you know, competitors to bid on it, and we just can't, being as isolated as we are, we just can't, they don't want to come from across the bay, there are cooperatives across the bay, Hampton Roads area, they won't honor us, we've been members of that before, they won't honor the prices and come over here to us, so, this is something we do when we cannot go out and bid something because there's just nobody else to bid, and, and the painting projects that we just did totaled only two thousand, there were probably five projects.
Yeah, five, because it wasn't two hundred thousand, it's just one school, you know, the accumulation of all the painting that we're doing over the summer.
Attacking like the worst first, right, like arcade high bathrooms, the middle school, the, um, porticoes and doorways, Puncatig Elementary School, it's their turn, next year it will be Kegatag, because we didn't have summer school in Puncatig, so we could paint it, so, that's the type of thing that we use it for because with a budget as big as Mr. Bennett's, I'm singling him out, I'm sorry, but that's where we use it almost exclusively.
This is a V S B A policy, so then this would apply to like Richmond or G Beach, who have five, six hundred million dollar budgets?
And Northern County, and, and, right, everybody.
When they purchase, so we're all, so you're asking, I don't know, I'm?
I'm not, I'm not asking, it's, it's, it's the significant.
I just wanted to offer that, I mean, as industry standards go, really the point that you just made, Madam Chair, I think that, in my opinion, is reasonable for an amount such as this to go off, if for no other reason than based on the equation.
I can speak to it on the state side, some of this money is also used for local businesses that actually can do the work, we, right now, on the state side, a lot of businesses across the water will not come over here, they, they like to always bid, but soon as they go to their careers, they say, no, we're not coming, then, because, because you're a state entity, you're limited to what you have to do, but then, this little budget here will give them the authority, especially in paintings, and the job will get done, and keep on going, so I, I really like to see three thousand, two hundred thousand, because everything now is folded.
And I understand what you're saying, but I still feel one of our big jobs as a school board members, or our school board, is to, is, is the budget, I mean, money is our, and I feel like there should, we still do the work that they're saying we need to do, it's just we will need to approve it, and I think it'd be good for us to have a hand book for spending and how we're spending, especially we have that twenty four million excess, so, I make, I would want to move that we adjust the small purchasing to a hundred thousand dollars.
I'll say.
So, there's a motion, a second on the floor, to, to set the small purchasing price at a hundred thousand dollars?
Absolutely, discussion on it, so, let's say that if you can't get a small person to a hundred thousand, we'll be able to opt it case by case basis, come through the board and say, yep, we paid two hundred, good for this purchase, or is it one hundred, and that's it?
So, what if we, if we can't get, what do we do if we can't get someone to bid on something? Do we just, if someone?
Well, that's why the schools haven't been painted in, in so many years, is because we couldn't, we couldn't find a vendor.
So, so let's take, let's look at the petition, the petition example that we gave, so we're, we're, when you can't get somebody to repair it, you just don't do it?
Well.
Or, or you do, do you come back and say, listen, we can't find anybody to repair, we're gonna have to buy a new one, or?
Well, that's what we had to do, is buy a new one, because we couldn't find anybody to repair it, it's automated or electronic or it moves or whatever.
I can come up there if you need to, speak on that with the board, but.
Let's, before you do, it makes my question, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but if, if, if there's a process we have to do, we have painting, and it goes out, and says, okay, it's going to take two hundred thousand dollars, then you just come to the board and say, no, look, we got this bid, and three of them came in, and they're a hundred fifty, a hundred seventy five, two hundred thousand, and then we can?
But that's one of the problems, we don't have that, we don't have people who will respond and give us a price.
That's where the small purchasing thing of two hundred thousand dollars comes in, it comes into play where you don't get the multiple bids, where we put something out, and I've struggled with it here since I got here, and I think you all know that on the shore, it is difficult to get them from across the bay, and even out of Salisbury unless it's a large project, so, and, and the other thing that we've run into, and we had a bad situation several years ago, is a lot of contracts, smaller contractors in this area don't have the proper insurance and certificates to work in our schools, and when it happens, and inadvertently, we got bid by, uh, three years ago, I believe, so, I mean, that's the other kind of deal there, is that, you know, we've got to make sure that we've got the proper certificates, the proper insurance in place, but when we put something out to bid, and let's use paint, school paint, and we don't get anybody but one responder to it, so we get him to go through and price the various painting jobs, if it goes over two hundred thousand dollars, we've got to come back to the board.
We cut, we cut, we don't do it all.
Or, or we don't do it, but like, right now, and I mean, and I'm just gonna, I'm being as transparent as possible, a hundred thousand dollars on this will handicap me some degree.
It'll handicap facilities.
Because even some, interior paint job right now, Puncatig, a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, and, and I mean, that is completely, and, and, you know, the schools that I'm looking to paint in the future are bigger than that, I have, in the last several weeks, found a paint contractor out of Salisbury that will be interested in bidding our projects moving forward, so that would be helpful, but this is pretty much where we can't get multiple bids for stuff, we, we've improved that a lot in the last three years, because, I mean, we're getting more people, more people looking at our projects and things like that, we're getting multiple bids, so, it's been helpful, but it's still gonna be, the petition law came in ninety eight thousand dollars, and really, we didn't think, I had three quotes on that project, one of them was one eighty, one of them was one forty, and one of them was ninety eight, so, if I hadn't had the ninety eight, we'd had to pick one of the others or found an option to do something different.
And it allows them to get prices without having to advertise and write, and, we don't have a procurement office, we write all of our own, we write every one of our own bids and RFPs, and it's, it's a legal nightmare, I'm sure Brad could tell you, it is, it is not easy, we're not, we're not attorneys.
Without doing a primer on procurement law, the, the basic idea on the Virginia public procurement is, everything is sealed bid unless an exception applies, and the small purchase exception says, you don't have to put out an RFP or an invitation for bids and then open sealed bids, it says you can adopt procedures if it's under a certain threshold to pick up the phone and call people and solicit different kinds of informal bids, this has nothing to do with whether you as a board approve or disapprove, you all still reserve the right to approve everything, it's just the front end process is reduced for contracts that are anticipated to be under this floor, excuse me, under this ceiling, and the general assembly, over time, has upped what that threshold is as the economy has changed to give you all more flexibility, I don't think it changes the board, you're still gonna vote to approve the vouchers, this will be a voucher that you will vote to approve, it just means less work for them, what I've heard them say is, we can't even find three people to bid out here, but we know Jane's Painting Company's available, we can pick up the phone and get an informal quote from her, write that down, call two other people in Salisbury or across the water, and if they say, no, we don't come out there, they've done what they have to do to say they've made those informal solicitations, does that make sense?
Yes, I think, uh, most of the time, that, I, I would like that, if, even if you're getting informal bids from people that you call on regularly, I, I would, I would, I would be interested in seeing those.
But I think what he said was that you would approve it in the form of a voucher, and the voucher would mean completion, so, that's different than what, you know, I'm, I'm not arguing with you, but that would, but the proof of vouchers, it's done, yeah.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I say call for the question, I think, I think in, in the discussion, so, call, call.
So, it was a hundred, so there was a motion, a second, to, to limit this purchasing to a hundred thousand dollars, who is in favor? Can you raise your hands if you can count? Thirty-one in favor, a hundred thousand, is that, is that right?
Correct, but I'm hearing what I heard.
So, the motion fails.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the small purchasing as presented.
Second. All right, I'm gonna do a hold, can you, I hold on up the policies, all the second, all the second readings?
Okay.
Thank you for that, Mr. King, and clear it up for some vouchers.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve policies seven point oh two, seven point oh six as presented.
Thank you, all in favor?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, seven point oh two to seven point oh eight, screen.
Is there a second?
Exactly.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, all of those passed, there's a first reading, please look at that, if you have questions, contact appropriate person, all right, action, I guess, so we're gonna hear about the cell phone policy.
This policy was up last time, and based on the executive order that the governor just put out, um, I think she's got some.
And so the cell phone policy was, um, we brought that up for the last meeting for, for a vote to implement, and so we're bringing back the same policy that was up there for the first reading, first time, for you all to, um, probably, to try to get this passed tonight, so we can get a update on our student code of conduct handbook, and also, we've gotten some more updates, there's more amendments that may go to it, to adjust the one that we currently have, for, for the most part, because we didn't want to look at the first one that was submitted the last meeting, and what we were saying that would make it different from last year was just that the middle school students were gonna not have their cell phone devices in one during the school instructional, so it's elementary and middle school, and we kept in there for the high schools through this to be able to use theirs, not anymore in the green zones, which are the hallways, but it was mostly in the cafeteria, and so since this was presented to you all, we know that the governor has the executive order that came out, um, executive order thirty-three, that county wants no cell phones, um, school, like, school free, cellphone free schools to be implemented by January first, twenty twenty-five, so our stance would be just go ahead and start it the way we need to finish it, so instead of starting one way and just switching it up, let's just go ahead and start with the way the governor intends for us to have it done and implemented by January first, twenty twenty-five, um, and pretty much with that being said, it would still allow only high school students to use their cell phones in the cafeteria during their scheduled lunchtime, and, and I think that was the amendments that we had for today.
Mr. King, prepared a very similar one, um, this has red on it, this is that, the one that has red?
Is that the agenda?
Yes, yes, please.
Excuse me for not, all we did was take the cell phone policy as it was printed in your student code of conduct, take the policy from last meeting and redline, so you can see all of the changes, and then we put some comments on the right margin that we think are prompted by the executive order that came out, so, we didn't change any of the administration's recommendations or the board's recommendations from last meeting, but we did add some bullets, I've got a few hard copies, you want me to pass, I only have five, four, but that would be helpful, see what I mean?
Can you all look up one there? Do you have one there?
Yes.
Do you have one?
Again, just to walk through it, amen, we started with what's already published in your last year's code of conduct, we took what the board discussed at its last meeting and redlined it, and that's the only changes you see in the text of the policy, but on the right hand side are some bubble comments that are triggered by, some like, just to clarify, I think there's a question about wireless headphones, for instance, and what you really meant by that, just to clarify, but all the others relate to things like, the governor's executive order directs that ultimately the guidance that's developed by the Department of Education has to include a process for parents to communicate with children for quote unquote typical reasons, I've joked about this for years, I, I told you all last time that we have four sons, and they, none of them ever missed a day of school, which is fantastic, but the oldest one never could remember anything, and his mama would get in the car and take him his lunch and all that kind of stuff, I don't know if that's typical reasons or not yet, you know what I'm saying, so we won't know until the guidance comes out what constitutes typical reasons, that, although I will say the executive order says you all may adopt a policy that's more stringent than what ultimately they may publish as guidelines, we just don't know yet, does that make sense? And then the other big piece, I think, is, we just want to make sure you're accommodating children with special needs and or medical and or learning needs, if they are using devices in school, then we'll probably have to make allowances for that, which can cause some strife, because other kids may not understand, and because of privacy issues, we can't speak about those issues to the students who have concerns, does that all make sense? I'll shut my mouth, unless you all have questions.
My concern was that at this point, if the first offense is one day of OSS, if a child went to the cafeteria and used their phone when they're allowed to use it, powered it off, put the pit power off and add things in their bookbag, and they need a day of OSS, I think that's pretty harsh for something that may have been innocent.
No, I think it's, if the teacher sees it, if it's, if they had it out, if it's in their bookbag, nobody's gonna be saying.
Because I, what I read was first offense, one day OSS, so if it says has it out of the bookbag, then you probably just took it out of your bookbag, but something that is, you know, could happen, is, when we look at other policies where you get a day OSS, let's say it's something, you know, negative to the teacher, but yet you get one day of OSS.
Well, I would say the cell phone committee, and there are frightening people, so, like, committee, an assortment, um, what they want to get away from was really two things, they wanted to really, this, to really have some impact, there should be some inconvenience on the parent's part, because we feel like some of this could be influenced by the parents who, children are using the cell phones, and secondly, they want to get away from the teachers confiscating the money, so that was a big headache for a lot of people, so we wanted to get away from that, and this is after, I'm not kidding, many discussions, many discussions with a large group of people, and this is what they, this is what they suggested.
And so I, I don't disagree except for if it dings in their bag and they didn't take it out, are they gonna get a day of OSS?
That's, that's not my understanding, no, they, they would have it out, they'd be using it, and the teacher would say, Jesse, go to the office.
And I agree, because that person took it out, no one did this, it wasn't an accident.
But if you look at this, it does say all of it's stored away. It does say that the thing is, depends on how you want to, how people want to go with that thing, but the policy would state that it has to be stored away.
My question just revolved around how much discretion does administration have, just thinking, I, I read it several times today, and I was just kind of thinking, because my phone, I drop it, I pull it out, it falls out of my bag, like, if I'm a teacher and I see a student with their phone in their hand, they're not using it, but it's just kind of in their hand, and I send them to the office, does the principal or AP have the discretion to say it was kind of a misunderstanding, um, let me talk to the teacher to find out really what happened, I don't, I didn't see any principal discretion in any of this.
And I think we were kind of getting what's going to be a clear point, the way we have it right here, because most of the principals make that announcement at the beginning of the day, at this time, all cell phones should be off and stored away.
Okay.
That's the warning, so I think that's how we're gonna look at it, so if a teacher accidentally sees it, that means you accidentally went in your purse or your bag and pulled it out.
Okay.
So, that would be case by case with the administration, when most of them make that announcement, the bell rings, during their morning announcements, all cell phones should be off and stored away.
all cell phones should be off and stored away at this point. And I've already been putting it on Facebook, if you mind, right, we're going to be doing this following this. So hopefully, um, trying to take a strong stance on it.
That's fine.
I got a question. I'll move for you, or excuse me, Mr. Jordan. And I wasn't on the cell phone committee. Why do we even need phones at lunchtime? We turn them off, we get to school, we turn them off when we leave. It's very simple process and that way we don't have to worry about like what Mr. Spidey else said. You know, we forget to turn it off after lunch, we're rushing, we get back, we're shoving their bookbag in and then you have to lock up the truck. Turn them off when you get there. And I, and I understand, let them have something to do on the bus. I have no problem with that. The students that are there for after-school activities may need the phone. Hey, Dan, come pick me up. Yeah, I'm on my way, you know. You know, students are riding the bus home, it keeps them occupied. You know, I've been on these school buses. I know the kids that are on their phone are quiet and they're well behaved. I have no problem with that. But when they're at school, they can turn them off. When they're at school, they can turn them off. That's my, you know, sort of stand on this.
Cafeteria use, I think we looked at it as a committee for some of the students who may work, to maybe they get text messages from their jobs, so they can check it during that time. Some students may get messages from parents, picking up siblings, or just to, just to have that during that time only because it's not instruction. This is what they want for the cell phones is during instructional time. So that's what we're looking at. And if it has to be revised or we have to revamp it, we're going to see how this will go first. I think they didn't have any problems with the cafeteria. They really didn't have too much of an issue in the green zone, though we did take that hallway away from them so they won't be trying to make that last text message while they're trying to get to class and standing in the doorway and trying to make sure they text. So this is just giving them that, that option just to make sure they could check. And while there's, some of them listen to music, some of them are playing video games. But that's what we discussed, you know, just to make sure sometime it keeps the cafeteria, um, kind of like you said, almost like the bus. They're doing something to maybe just looking at stuff, sharing stuff with each other. And we just kept it there only for high school kids only. That was our rationale with the sense.
Follow-up real quick, I'm sorry. Were the high school administrators okay with them having it at lunchtime?
Yes, yes.
I'd just like to say that, um, I've had citizens contact me to ask, um, why the board didn't, wasn't having a public hearing. My response, um, you know, open to feedback is that we're working to get a policy in place to get this um, information out before the new school year, and then the student handbook. If anyone could have come tonight for public comment or, and they can send, don't forget, there's the email option for public comment.
Yes, sir. And if I read it correctly, we're not far off the governor's executive order anyway, so I, I mean, just to follow up. Not really doing any good, I mean, at this point.
So when the committee did come to speak, the parent that talked to us, she mentioned that one of the things that was brought up was there would have to be, um, better communication between the teachers and the parents. Um, I know in high school, the student should take more responsibility, but with cell phones, it's been easy because they're able to text you from school, you tell them what's going on. Without them, we really didn't have to push towards that.
I do, yes, completely.
And we started looking at stuff after Ms. Johnson came to speak. Um, there's other school divisions, um, across the bay, they use like parent square. Because her concern was mainly the different changes and things that occur, um, throughout the day that they may not get notification of. Personally, most of her stuff was clubs and sponsors when they changed things and adjust practice, cancel practices. So that could be something we could bring up to coaches. Um, some of the schools do like to re, to remind. But then they also have like parent square and different other ones that we start looking at after that to see if it's a school issue or is it clubs and coaches and them communicating with parents when things change in the moment, like before the bell rings, or go cancel practice, you stayed at the school, now you get. So it's those things. But we did start looking at different, um, ways of communication that, um, you know, we can have coaches make sure they, which one are you going to use and make that at their parent meeting to discuss, okay, if things change, we use this, we give our number, this is going to go out immediately. And I cancel practice, I'm not going to just communicate with the student, I'll also communicate with the parents. But that was her main concern was the changes that had happened throughout the day, sponsorships, clubs and, and, um, sports. So we, we started looking into stuff that same next day I did.
One more question. So is that from first bell to our last bell? Move to get off, walk up, get off the bus, get out of the school.
Instructional way, we enter.
Okay. I would mind saying that again, the first time, we just kind of do nothing, see how things are going in the school, please.
And that's what we're going to do, um, track the data from implementation from the school this, this year and last year. And then seeing if it does have to end up being out of the cafeteria, but we're going to monitor. And, uh, principals do send, uh, quarterly discipline data to me. So we're going to be looking at that, like, how do we start looking at the first semester will be an indicator. That's when the re, the other school division, everybody will have to get on with the governor's, um, policy by the first. So we'll be already tracking to see where, if we're hitting or missing, but it's going to still have to be off and stored away. Um, and just see what we have to tweak or whatever to be in compliance with the policy. And they're going to do, um, August the fifteenth, they're going to send out guidelines perhaps, if like the model policy of guidelines for it. But we're trying to, since we were kind of aligned with what they were going with so far, we were going to probably go with ours right now. By the fifteenth, we're going to probably have our, um, code of conduct in publication. So we'll see what they have and if something has to happen to tweak it for that January first deadline. So, but we'll be giving updates because we'll be monitoring the discipline with that.
I'm slipping off topic, I will admit. Um, at four, about four o'clock today, we got an email, that there will be, be the Virginia Department of Ed listening sessions on this carpet, um, across the state. If my geography is correct, closest one to us on the shore is Virginia Beach, and it is next week, Tuesday. Um, just as a quick matter of interest, I, and we are invited if we want to join any particular one, but it's great. It would really be nice if, you know, it didn't happen. Just to come. Any more questions? Any more questions?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the cell phone policy as presented.
And we touch forward on the original.
There's like four of them up there.
Red one.
The red one. The red one.
The red one.
There is a motion on the red one. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion in second to the red cell phone policy.
Red one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. King. The course offering guide.
There you go. So tonight we have a course offering guide. I bring it every year. Um, this is the first year that I did not think I had anything that needed to come up for board approval other than just the normal updates that come from VDOE or from the community college. However, I did just find one, um, item on here that I do need board approval for because I thought it was one of the first readings at the last meeting and it was not. So in your new, this is the final draft, if you all approve tonight on page thirty-two. I thought it was into the first reading of the last board meeting, but somehow it got missed. So, um, if you all wouldn't mind doing an immediate approval for tonight, I'll go for this policy, but also for the guide itself. And that is, in our current policy right now, it's, it's just a generic statement that Akimak County will not allow plagiarism or cheating. That's it. No consequence, no nothing. As you see, what I put into the guide is what I'm proposing to be, um, updated into the new policy for number sixteen. And that policy has several different, um, ones in there. This year, um, as you all saw a couple of weeks ago, when I sent you all the old draft with edits, the new final draft, and then kind of like little cheat sheet of the different updates I had done, um, this is a major concern. Cheating's always happened. Plagiarism's always happened. We know that. It's been happening for centuries. This year has honestly been the worst year for Akimak County that the Easton Shore Community College has a major red flag for us. Of the number of students that have been caught in both face-to-face classes by the teachers and virtually. Just in one class alone, the teacher caught three students on the same test, both face-to-face and virtually, within a matter of five minutes. I don't know if the students saw.
Can you back up?
Three students in one class, one was face-to-face, two was virtual, and the teacher caught them within five minutes cheating on a test. I don't know if they thought that the teacher was just playing on his computer, but what he's looking at is GoGuardian. He actually saw where students were on Google, Googling the answers to the questions of the test. And with GoGuardian, when you get caught, you, as a teacher, you can automatically shut it down. So their test was automatically shut down. And of course, then they're looking around like, oh, I can't answer my questions anymore. Um, we had incidents where a student had finished up all of her work into a class. So to do her classmate a favor, she helped, tried to help her classmate complete numerous assignments to turn in for that student, which then got both students in trouble. So when we're looking at the Easton Shore Community College, number one, Akimak County pays a hundred percent tuition. Our students are getting this more as a favor, to be able to have this opportunity and privilege to be able to do this. Because most school divisions charge kids, whereas the only thing we charge is the penalty to drop out. Um, so I feel like, you know, we're doing a lot for our kids for them to not be cheating, plagiarizing. And also when we look at the Easton Shore Community College, and I did put that in as part of our policy, to follow their policy. Because our students were very lucky this year. The college was very consistent and it was, like I said, numerous teachers, whether it was a Easton Shore Community College employee teacher or our own Akimak teacher, where they were consistent and actually gave the student a zero for the individual assignment when they could have gave them a zero for the course. Which when we're looking at GPA, when we're looking at college courses getting transferred out, it doesn't look on transcripts. Um, so the college had actually requested that we have some kind of a policy in place. So that's our deal of research that we do. It just says, don't do it. Um, so as a consequence, this is what I talked to some counselors about it. I talked to some administrators and obviously I talked to some of our dual enrollment teachers, um, who, yeah, they definitely felt that if a student's cheating in the class, they've lost the privilege of being able to take further dual enrollment classes. Because it really is a privilege that we're given. And for those of you all that heard, like at our graduation, Arcadia High School's valedictorian graduated an associate's degree. That's a lot of classes for Akimak County, one to pay for, but the opportunity for a child to have to graduate high school with. So that's kind of why we were a little bit more rigid onto the AT and dual enrollment one. But at best practice, for years, we've always gave a zero on the assignment that the student plagiarized or, um, cheated on. So we've had done that before. It's just never been in writing. Um, so that was actually one of the policies that I would like to ask for the approval along with the actual course offering guide, um, because it will go hand in hand. And that way, um, I can get this to the publishers as well to get this. Because with the course offering guide, we do our ninth grader orientation every year for those students. We do a cookout, but also make sure that every ninth grader gets one of these books in their hand. If they don't show up, we have their name to make sure they get it on the first day of school. So they can't say they didn't get it in writing, as well as we also post it on our website. We have it at the, um, it used to be Akimak County Library, now it's Hartfully. Um, so that way it's readily available. And then, of course, we have extra copies, which someone comes in and never needs it. Um, other than that, a lot of it was still some updates and clarification from VDOE. The other update was, uh, that we did change in there was also in regards to the athletic requirements. Start with, we found that it was in two different sections of the guide. We needed to consolidate, put it all together, so it would be a little less confusing. Um, but also when our administrators meet as an athletic division, that division is actually Akimak and North Hampton together. So they make decisions together. And one of the things that has been brought up through several of their athletic meetings is how North Hampton is following the VHSL policy only. Akimak County does the VHSL policy they follow, but they have the GPA requirement. And when the administrators looked into it, that not only does North Hampton not have a GPA requirement, but neither does the majority of the school divisions in Virginia. Most school divisions follow the VHSL rule. VHSL rule is you have to pass three out of four courses per semester. So if we're trying out for football, if you're ready to start here, uh, they would have had to have passed three out of four courses last spring. So that is what we have to report to VHSL. VHSL does not care what the serious GPA is, as long as they pass three out of four, which I can honestly tell you, the last few years, maybe a handful have I've gotten waivers from the school divisions as a whole. Not just as a school, but as a whole, um, where I will say most of our students have done a very good job trying to keep their grades up while playing sports. And I think it's kind of been a motivator for the kids as well, to keep the grades up, be able to play sports. I think the coaches have had a lot more volume of staying on top of kids' tunes for grades. Um, I know firsthand, I've seen some coaches in the buildings checking on kids, sometimes eating lunch with kids, um, just trying to keep a good thumb on it. So any questions for the course offering guide?
Um, the, I guess Virginia United States Government, uh, excuse me, Virginia United States History. So that's the first thing down the list.
So that was an update I actually just sent to you all, um, Monday? Yeah, I think it was yesterday. So the State Department recommends Virginia US History High School class. It's recommended to be an eleventh grade class. It's up to the vision if they want it to be any other grade level. However, I did get the final, um, approval that if a student takes college US History one twenty-one and one twenty-two combined, it'll actually substitute for the Virginia US History High School class. So they wouldn't even have to take it, which that would help with our academic students. So students that are typically on that advanced track for the Advanced APHUMAR or the college track, they could actually take college history and place a Virginia US, which is a requirement for graduation. And the history, just to give you all a heads up, this will be the last year you'll see the history as it is in the guide because all of that will change after this upcoming year. World Geography will no longer be a high school class, it will go to middle school. So actually, the history's recommended by the State Department is for world history one, ninth grade, world history two, tenth grade, Virginia US eleven, and government twelve. And that'll go in effect for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Did you want approval altogether, or did you want us to?
Uh, well, there's really just two issues. The one is the approval for the policy change. And then the other is usually the board just approves the guide as is, and then I can always send it to the president.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve of policy change, this is policy J, F, C, D, X, R, number sixteen. That we approve as, uh, true.
Seems harsh, Ms. Taylor. You've cheated once, never, no more. No more classes for you, okay? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I will tell you one last thing with that. We are doing a mandatory orientation for all first-year dual enrollment students this year. But they will also have to sign off on that from the community college, or they cannot take a dual enrollment class.
I know, but I think some of these children might have picked up these bad habits in ninth and tenth grade. It may be hard to break.
I agree. That's why we need, we're going to have a nice orientation with them.
Well, thank you for your word of honor.
We have, I move that we also approve the course offering graduation guide as presented.
There's a motion in second to approve Ms. Taylor's course offering guide. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Operating budget, additional revenues.
So as we stated at the last meeting in June, we did have additional revenues above and beyond that that was appropriated and approved by the board. So we've had various meetings and we're coming back. These were the revenues that we put out there at the last meeting that we were going to examine and come up with ways to, um, suggested spending of that proposed spending. And these were the dollar amounts presented to you at the last meeting. So we'll, each slide will address one line item. For, um, Virginia preschool initiative. What we actually received was more funding for, uh, twelve additional slots. And, um, Ms. Farrell has contacted the State Department and we, in order to qualify for those slots, Virginia Preschool Initiative has twenty children. Virginia Preschool Initiative has twenty children in each class, and we have one in each elementary school. So twelve would not necessarily be a full class, so, and then where would you decide to put it of the four mainland elementary schools? Ms. Farrell contacted the State Department, and for these twelve slots, we can count our existing four-year-olds who are in early childhood special education classes, and we do have more than twelve of them. So we do qualify for the two, full two-hundred-and-five-thousand. And what we are proposing to spend that on, last year Ms. Farrell put some sensory playground equipment out for the pre-K playgrounds. And we were looking to put these multisensory chimes out for a hundred-and-fourteen, four-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand dollars. They meet the needs of a diverse population, and they would be in the preschool playgrounds. And then salary allocation, you'll see when we get to English Language Learners, the funding doesn't, doesn't completely fund the total number we're gonna do. So we proposed using some of that ELL fund, some of this funding to support the ELL program. We have a number of ELL students in the four-year-old program, and we looked to use one of these new positions to help support our four-year-olds, our four-year-old EL students. In the English Language Learners, you'll see that we are proposing six additional teachers, which it goes over what we have by the eighty-seven that the VPI is going to contribute. And we talked about a growth, we've had cohort programs in the past, we've had them for reading, I believe, for reading specialists. And we were looking into a grow-your-own cohort program for ELL endorsement. It would include college courses in order for teachers who are interested to go out there and get their ELL, which is a hard area to staff to, the glade endorsement. The next one, excuse me. Is Early Reading Initiative, not to be confused with Early Reading Intervention. This is just fifty-five thousand dollars, and the same concept applies here. We were looking for a grow-your-own cohort program for reading specialist endorsement in college classes. When we do typically now, not always in the beginning, when we do a cohort, there would be an agreement that they, if we paid for these college classes, they agree to teach for Atchamack County schools for a certain period of years, or they have to do prorated reimbursement of the amount spent on the courses. I think that's part of the IT program as well. So we're not just getting someone their reading endorsement or their EL endorsement, and then they leave us. I think with IT, we want them three years after they're completed. I'm not sure what it would be for this, but there would be some sort of an agreement for them for retention. Early Reading Intervention, this is an existing program that we've also referred to in the past as PALS. We, Ms. Farrell again, received permission from DOE to expand kindergarten. Remember when we were talking about our operational budget? We were looking at alternative funding sources for some, some of the much-needed items in kindergarten assistance was one of us. So Ms. Farrell was able to get permission from DOE to expand kindergarten instructional assistance from a half FTE to one per classroom. This is eight additional positions at an estimated cost of two-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand. And then the remaining twenty-thousand, six forty-seven would be used for early literacy supplies for two. At Risk is where we had the largest amount. We've been looking at a number of things, including a presentation you're gonna hear tonight. We were looking at providing a security guard service for our, all of our schools, except for Tangier. And we're estimating, we're, you know, we're estimating nine-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. The NNDCC, also known as JROTC, but it's a smaller program. We've been wanting to purchase those supplies for the past two fiscal years, and it has just not come out that way. So that's where we would like to put about five-hundred-thousand. Success Academy, as you know, that was funded by Esser Funds. And we think that the statistics from that narrative is continuing. We would propose seventeen Saturdays, that's two each month beginning in October and one in January. It would be grades one and two and nine versus, nine through twelve, because all in Virginia would fund grades three through eight. So that's an estimate of that. After-School was also previously funded by Esser, and this is an estimate for elementary and secondary after-school. A social worker had been additional, we had one. The second social worker was funded by Esser, and this is to continue that position. The Lexia English Program, we're using Lexia in a lot of different areas. This is one that's recommended by Ms. Ibarro. And supplemental intervention programs to support approved literacy curriculum, to include the Huggers Bridge the Gap, the twenty-twenty-five edition. Also to update the Foundations Program at an estimate of seventy-five thousand. And the Virginia, Virginia Literacy Act STICANS for required trainings that all of our teachers are required to, or will be required to have. So that is how we propose to spend this additional money. And this is on, with dollar amounts included, is on the website, on board docs. And we would like for you all to have a public hearing at our next meeting, so we could get public input from this as well. No, just, just to have, just to please have a public hearing at the next, announce a public hearing.
I move that we have a public hearing based on the operating budget that's presented.
A motion in second has been offered for a public hearing at our meeting on August the second. All in favor? Opposed? Next up is the meeting calendar. So I think initially, we'd wanna try to go to Tangier while the others are still mild. But then it was pointed out that the first day of school is our meeting, and there's plenty going on. And on the day of the meet, on the day of the Tangier meeting, we would be leaving at like twelve-thirty or one in order to get there and get home at least that one. So I think everybody would be here for the first day of school, so. This is the, this is the, this is a proposed, it looks like we would be going to Tangier in October instead. Yeah, that's what it says on here. We always have a Tangier meeting, we're hoping that we can get that. You don't wanna be going to Tangier, they'll be like, oh. Yes. I think the last line should read April one. Very long. Yes, it should be.
Chair, question? The, so it looks like I can refer, could we go to the September seventeenth meeting? It was supposed to be in September anyway, this meeting.
Should we do the, what it might be better? So you're saying in Sep-, in September, we would just, instead of having our first meeting at a school and our second meeting here, we would just, we would just change those. And our first meeting in September would be here, and then the second meeting would be Tangier?
Correct, just, I don't know, temperatures and whatnot, but I guess what the rule would be.
It's just a good chance of a hurricane in September is a bad one, Dr. B.
I move to approve the calendar as presented, with the exception of changing that Bob, April first.
Second. First and the second to adopt this updated calendar. All in favor? Opposed? Delegate and alternate selection. So at the BSBA, they need, they'll come out, the BSBA will have, they, they have the employee lobbyists, and the lobbyists will go and lobby on behalf of the school boards. And so each, there's a representative for each division to go and vote what the lobbyists should lobby the General Assembly for. So it happens at the conference. The week before Thanksgiving, we'll all go, hopefully we'll all go to Winkler, and the delegate will go into that session with the lobbyist, with the BSBA.
Would it be volunteer, or would it be, or would it be?
I wouldn't mind doing it, if somebody wanted to be to. But it says no.
Historically, it'd be a chair by chair.
Chair, I move that we approve that chair by chair, or chair be delegate, and vice versa be the alternate for this. Delegate and alternate delegation selection. Chair.
There's a motion in second, is there discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And next, um. So in the event that, I guess, Dr. Hall's unable to sign a document, should we like the backup to be Beth, our leading chair, Taylor?
Chair, I move that we have the chair, Taylor, and Beth only as signature of relations to pretend to come down.
Thank you, there's a motion in second to have Beth appear to sign any documents, and if Dr. Hall's not available, all in favor? All opposed? We'll cover our discussion items, next up is Allied Security.
Good evening, I'll be pretty brief. We've been, I've been kinda tasked here recently with, through both Dr. Hall and the Safety Committee, we've been looking at options for putting security officers in our schools. And there has been, and there's probably going to be again this year, a SRO, SOO grant through the state of Virginia that once it's available, I'm, I'm gonna apply for. But I'm just gonna kinda give you a quick how we got to where we're at right now. I looked through a lot of stuff and did some investigations on like industry experience and different things to kinda look at various security providers. And came to Allied Universal for, because they had connections to the Eastern Shore with some contracts they had. And kinda where we started with this, it goes back to, I guess, two years ago, when I stood before you all and proposed that we put metal detectors in all of our schools, which I still to this day say was a very good thing, it was needed. Unfortunately, you know, I probably wasn't far sighted enough to look down the road and really see what that looked like as far as manning these metal detectors. We went through the Virtual Academy with Garrett and things like that, and, and you know, we've got teachers manning our metal detectors, teachers days, custodians, coaches, just, just kinda runs a gauntlet of people within the school that other than just a virtual training on how to use them, really aren't trained to man security devices like this. So that kinda precipitated the conversation of looking at security officers to be in the schools. You know, right now, we man our metal detectors in the mornings. Kids know that as closer the bell gets to ring, the longer line, people start getting hurted through, and you know, kids figure this stuff out. So I mean, you know, they can, they can circumvent the metal detector, it's really easy. Because once the first bell rings, metal detectors are still in place, but the rest of the day, a kid gets buzzed in or buzzed out, there's nobody back. So they, you know, they don't go through the metal detector, a manned metal detector if they leave a school, they come in later. So I, a statistic that I found, according to the National Center of Education Statistics, the most common security measure used by schools nationwide is a requirement of students and visitors pass two metal detectors every day. Students and visitors. Right now, any visitor comes to our school after the morning time, they don't go to a metal detector. They still sign in and, and all that, but they don't go to a metal detector. So that even increased kinda the need to start looking at this. So, so we looked at this, I talked with Allied, Allied made a trip over here, they kinda went through a morning session of students coming in and out of school and, and different things, and we went to several sites. You know, they pointed out some things and everything, so we began further talks with them about what the services could look like. And we kinda investigated several options that, you know, were like a full staff, and we had X number of security guards in each school. We looked at a, a kind of a different option where we did some rotational stuff, where the schools that start early, the security guards are there, and then, and a couple of them would peel off to go to an elementary school to be there. So we looked at some rotating type shifts, and then we looked at like a reduced number. I guess you could call it a minimal amount of security guards and everything. So we looked at different options and, and kinda, you know, Beth had a figure on that last presentation. You know, so a lot of this stuff we looked at, so to come to Allied, Allied is the leading provider of security officer solutions, K through twelve nationally. I mean, they're, they're the leader in North America on security, they're, I mean, they're at the top. And so that kinda, you know, made me talk to them more and get some stuff. And we've got three representatives, we've got their business development manager, we've got their regional manager out of Chesapeake, and we've got their regional vice president, Sean here, that's gonna come up now, 'cause he can provide a lot more details. I've just kinda tried to do the lab work, but I'm gonna put the man that knows more than I do about this in front of you all. But it all boils down to safety for our students, our staff in our schools. And I think we all know that, and I think that we all also know that, you know, man, these times are crazy. And, and you know, we, we're on Eastern Shore, when I moved here, I felt like, you know, wow, it's pretty different here. And you, you know, you don't expect anything to happen. But I think that's when you kinda get complacent as well, in thinking that it can't happen here. And unfortunately, I think, you know, it's proven it can happen anywhere. I don't ever wanna see it happen here, but I also wanna make sure we are as provide, prepared as possible to keep our students safe. I think that's, you know, it's proven through the safety audits that we do through the state, that when students feel safe in securing the schools, the educational process they go through is more enlightening to them and they learn more. And I think, you know, that, those are, that's information's out there. So I'm gonna turn it over to Sean now, he can kinda just give you some information where we're at and where we're trying to get to. Thank you, sir.
Before Sean speaks, our principals and our teacher advisory, this is one of the things that they were talking about. They do not feel comfortable, our teachers do not feel comfortable going with bags in the morning. They don't know what's in there, they don't know how to look at them. And so that was one of the things where I met the teacher advisory, that they would like to not have to do that. Also, the principals were saying the same thing, the principals were saying they need those teachers in the classroom, men, manning the hallways and things like that, opposed to standing out there, especially in the morning, and trying to go with bags and, you know, things like that. So this is another example.
Good evening, hopefully you can hear me okay. Like Bobby said, Regional Vice President out of Virginia. I oversee all operations for Allied Security in the state of Virginia. We're the third, I promise you this will not be a long presentation, but we're the third largest employer in North America, seventh largest employer in the world, that very few people have ever heard of. So there's Amazon and Walmart and then Allied. We have over eight-hundred-thousand employees in, in, in North America and in ninety-one countries. I have six-thousand security professionals. That's a brand, we, we don't call them security guards, we, we believe that they're security professionals. And we have, I have six-hundred, pardon me, six-thousand underneath my purview in just the state of Virginia. And our organization breaks down into verticals. And, and so what I mean by this, healthcare is a vertical, commercial real estate is a vertical, higher education is a vertical. And each of those verticals have specialization and unique needs and differences. And that's how we go to market, that's how we build our training materials. And so when Bobby contacted us and we got together, unfortunately, the trends and, and, and the world that we live in is causing education, the education vertical, to really take a hard look at this because of the unfortunate events that we continue to see in the news repeatedly. So I am not the higher education expert, but we have one of those that has been in close contact with Bobby and is somebody that helps develop our programs. So when we talked about what are the options, and why would you look to outsource? It is really all around what you. Uh, it is really all around what you talked about, right? Having custodians or administrators or teachers, uh, try to, uh, essentially in the morning, um, execute these types of tasks. They don't have the training, right? They don't ha- and, and they're, they're worried about educating their students and whatnot. So how would we do it, right? Uh, in the state of Virginia, we are governed by, uh, by an, an agency called DCJS, the Department of Criminal Justice Services. Every one of our security professionals is licensed, they go through a si- a sixteen hour course, they go through a background check. We also do a background check, we also do a drug test, we will also conduct rigorous training around whatever equipment, um, has been invested in and essentially get them to understand the do's and don'ts. We will have a project manager working closely and coordinating closely with the different administrators, the principals, most of the time the vice principals that are handling those types of, uh, security functions and oversight. And we'll build that program out. And so really, uh, I hate to say it, but our business is growing very rapidly right now, just because of the world that we live in. And you just saw what happened on, over the weekend. Uh, unfortunately, there, we, we live in a dangerous world. Uh, and, uh, and so really just wanted to come in, uh, tell you a little bit about how we're set up, uh, the fact that we, we do a, you know, a lot of rigorous background checking. We are in the community, community already, um, some of the accounts that we have, uh, have trusted us are Purdue and Tyson uh, in the local area, um, and, uh, those are fairly large programs for us, uh, and we oversee those sites as well. But, uh, at this point, we really just like to open it up to any questions that you have.
May I, um, first begin by saying thank you, thank you for your willingness to even consider this for the region. So when you mentioned Purdue and Tyson, and I'm trying to get their business, but what are your thoughts about your ability to retain security professionals, um, in this region?
Thank you for giving the security professionals, yes. No, uh, well, it, it really, it, it does come down to any type of program that we start. It starts with having a market wage, right? I mean, that's how people put food on their table, they pay their, their rent, uh, and so and so. So, uh, we, we, um, we do have, um, the ability, not only through the, the partnerships that we have already, but we use third-party market data, uh, through, it's called ERI, Economic Research Institute. And so we know in every zip code, what's, what's the average salary compensation for whatever, um, whatever position you want to get, right? So we have that data, we feel confident that we, with the right market wage, uh, we can attract and retain. Uh, there is always in school systems, uh, when we do this, uh, there are some folks that we're going to have attrition during the summer because during the summer, our security professionals are not gonna work, uh, and so we will lose it. And we will have to kind of restart that hiring process each year. And we do see that, uh, but, uh, that kind of gets baked into, to the number. Uh, and I, I mentioned the, the, the way that a program like this really does work is, and, and I'm sorry, I should also mention, we do have a, a good benefits package, certainly the best in the industry. Um, uh, you know, it's, uh, we, we've got our medical programs, we've got dental 401K, um, a lot of different perks that we do. Uh, we do daily pay, uh, for, for security professionals. I was, I was, I couldn't believe that that was something that someone was very interested in wanting to get paid every single day, but believe it or not, a lot of folks do actually sign up for that. Uh, so we do have a comprehensive benefits package, and we do a lot of outreach. The key to it is having the right leadership structure as well. And here, we, we did build out this program with the size of it, having a dedicated project manager and an assistant who would again be doing a lot of the coordination and, and keeping the troops, uh, you know, satisfied.
So, uh, your security personnel, will they become across the bay to your schools, or are we looking for rent?
I, I think we'll be, yeah, I'm sorry, most of the time, we're gonna be, uh, we're gonna be hiring from the local community. Uh, so Purdue and Tyson very much so, a local community. Um, we don't, I, I mean, I, again, I've got, I've got partnerships in, in almost every zip code, uh, in the state of Virginia. Most of the time, I don't see folks that are, that are gonna travel a long distance, uh, especially again, this, a- as much as we, we need to make sure the compensation is competitive, it's also gonna be somewhat of an entry level compensation, right? Just based on, on what the, what the scope of work is.
Any other questions?
This is Daniel Hall, he's their, uh, business development manager.
Apologies everybody, uh, just a caveat on what Sean just mentioned. In addition to hiring from the local community, I also wanted to state that in the industry, our company has one of the highest growth and career mapping programs internally for security officers. So even though they have entry level work, what we're really providing is also a career opportunity for people that are hired in the communities to advance with us.
All right. So how would you decide how many, uh, security professionals you would have in a school, you know, above?
Yeah, it's a great question.
Would they be there all day, would they be there just for?
Yeah, great question, um, I know when we came out, I was not part of the, uh, the, the site assessment or not that included both these gentlemen and Frankie, I was from upstate. But we put together several models, which, which Bobby passed. Uh, and again, it's kind of, uh, an ideal model, uh, and then one that starts to, um, cross utilize or share resources, maybe starting in the high school and then going to one of the other schools later on in the day, so we start to share resources. We kind of got into a third model, and it, and I would, I would, I would honestly say, we really got into it, and we, we looked at the details, we said, but sometimes we, we, we build a program, and then we're given a budget, and those two things don't balance. Uh, and so what ends up happening is you've got a program that's not ideal, but maybe better than what you have. Uh, I always say, if we're gonna try to do something like this, uh, especially, uh, you know, in the school environment, you've got, with, with the investment that you have with the magnetometers, if you're gonna do it, do it right. And develop a program that's actually gonna support the students and the faculty, uh, and, and really deliver you the results that you're, that you're looking for. And so to answer your question, if, yes, today, you're, you're just there, uh, whoever's in, whoever's doing the magnetometers today, they're just there early, very early on right before, and then it's, it's wide open, the equipment's there, but it's really not serving any, any purpose. Does that answer your question, sir?
It does, and I, I did, I did have a, a little question, so if I was from the local community, do you have, uh, like an allied academy? They would go to?
We actually do, uh, we actually call it, uh, our academy, and every, every section, every, every, uh, level in our, what, you know, within our organization has to complete their academy. When I joined the organization, uh, in a separate role, uh, one lower than, than what I have today, I had to, had to perform that academy. When I moved into this regional vice president role, uh, I had to complete that next academy. So we have a learning management system, it is the absolute best in the industry. And within that system, uh, we have a higher education vertical, which has specialized LMS courses and whatnot. And many of those will, will be required to take, uh, for, from the staff.
I wanted to add one thing to your question, Mrs. Toddell. You asked about how we came to the numbers, the way we came to the initial numbers was based on the number of metal detectors we had in the school, and how many people would take the bag, and that's kind of where we started building the program from, from to start those numbers.
So I have a question, and maybe Dr. Hall will not show it, but just, um, wouldn't be sure that we, we, how comfortable are we in terms of our existing school resource officers, should we take this in the table? Would we have a agreement with, uh, with the town, so everybody would know their, their roles and responsibilities, I'm gonna want that to go down?
When we were doing this, and Bobby and I were walking around with them, looking at the schools, we did talk about those things, this would not come in here with our school resource officers, um, it's just a number level. We're actually, actually, with our school resource officers, so. We don't have, we don't have, we don't have, we don't have, we don't have any security at the elementary, but we would do this.
So I guess I just wanted to kind of understand, so like that's school resource officer, but you're a personnel, be basically manning the metal detectors and checking the bag, like that, then once they're done for the, that morning, they're?
Yeah, we've, uh, we've actually talked to Bobby about, um, essentially starting to support some other security functions within the school with some different, uh, patrolling and whatnot. And again, every, uh, and I have, you know, some experience with our districts and whatnot, um, you know, I, I've toured schools where they want our security professionals to go into the bathrooms and, uh, ensure, especially in the high schools, that we don't have vaping going on or other, uh, activities. Um, and, uh, so it really can be whatever, whatever the, you know, it comes down to also, what's the number that we've, that of, of security professionals and what are their duties? If, if we go with, with Model One, you might have more touring than if you have Model Two, where they start with the high school, and then they're going to another school later on in the day, right? So, so again, it's gonna be a customizable, it's not a one-size-fits-all. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Mr.? Thank you very much.
Financial report. Just wanted to update you on the medical insurance RFPs. We did receive, uh, three RFPs, and they do have a variety of self-funding versus, um, fully insured. And we are anticipating, um, the Local Choice TLC, which is a Virginia program, we're anticipating receiving that quote from them. We are holding interviews on Monday. Uh, the SAF, School Activity Fund audits are being prepared for, and they're actually going to be, to begin next week. On the financial report, uh, we're still just trying to spend down and close out and keep an eye on the closeout dates. Uh, we're in the process of, of balancing, say, the, the flow-through and, and the preschool grants, 'cause those are more simple. And, uh, Perkins brand is winding down as well, that has an earlier expiration date. But I think they're pretty much on target with some of our anticipated amendments have finally been approved, so hopefully the reimbursements will now be able to be accomplished. And then, are there any questions on the financial report? Then on the operating budget, um, kind of showing where we are on that. You see that there is a, a balance, a small balance remaining, but I did want to point out that two point eight million has been spent in operations and maintenance on carry forward projects. So they're not that much like over budget, they're doing carry forward projects that were actually approved at the end of twenty-two, that they just took a while to conclude.
Like ten scores.
That's, 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 sorry. Any other questions?
That's the ER state, or the ER P analyst, so. So what's happening with the ER P system?
Okay. The go-live is October first, we actually have a trainer on-site this week. She trained HR today, all day, and is spending the next two days with payroll. The demographics data, and that would be all the personal data of employees, and the payroll migration, the payroll data migration, which is moving it from the old system to the new system, is mostly complete, uh, with the exception of some VRS code setups, because of course VRS chose July first to change the way we report all hybrid reporting, uh, which was very difficult timing. So we're, except for those codes, we're, uh, pretty much complete except for that. Um, the lead policies must be set up now. Recently approved a lead policy where you can carry over thirty-six days as of next June thirtieth. These will be automatically put into the system and automatically calculated, so we're at the point of getting ready to do that. The data verification process begins on August twelfth through the sixteenth, and then all the demographic data and the vendor data will, loaded is double-checked and, and verified. We'll actually be doing, uh, direct deposit file testing will take place this month, which is, you know, we're get, we're getting there. After Truist finished our login accesses based on our call on the eleven. Our check printers are set up and tested, the bank signature cards, we have a bank account. The, uh, 'cause I don't know if you know it or not, but we did not have a specific bank account for schools, except for the payroll account. So we now have gotten permission through the treasurer and the county administrator, and we have, have a bank account set up. The bank signature cards and digital signature uploads will need to be updated to reflect Dr. Hall and, uh, Mr. Lilston as signatures. The new school hires, the new hires will have to be entered when the data is received, and new vendors are being kept current as new vendors are coming up. The requisition levels of approval mapping, this is POs, and who has to approve what POs. Now, POs will be generated at the site and not necessarily at, at the school board office. So teachers will generate their own PO, and it, the mapping process is the approval process that, that goes through, so that the requisition can actually become a purchase order. So that will need to be determined before the rec-to-check training, and we have that on-site on September fourth and fifth. Uh, we have a constant data update and verification until the go-live on October first. And, uh, then we're going to have to transfer summary data, because we're gonna have to issue W twos and ten ninety-nines, which will be for the calendar year, so we're gonna have to put the summary data into the new system, so that those can be generated. Those were previously generated by the county, and we will be doing that now. Some of the processes that we will continue with is we're gonna, uh, that we're looking at expanding after we survive and are successful with go-live, our employee expense and reimbursements, employee termination, leave requests, uh, posting job requisition, billing and receipts, P cards, fixed assets, and position control. So one of the reasons in where we try to look at why would the project delay from July first to, uh, October first? One of the biggest reasons was the inability to be able to download information from our current system to be able to upload it to the new system. Our current system could not download the data that we needed in Excel in order to be uploaded. And we told them that when we interviewed with them, but they said that they, they underestimated the abilities or lack thereof of our current system. So that was probably, um, the main reason for the delay. Because of that, we had to hand key in all personal information files, and then the data had to be reconfigured. This took a month of sessions just for payroll. Uh, also, they told us it, too far along in the salary, in, in the process, that our salary scales would have had to have been determined prior to May thirty-first. And as you know, we still didn't even have a budget by May thirty-first, so that was another reason. And also, we learned as we got through the process, when we were in the discovery process at the beginning of the project, they never gave us, uh, uh, the upload spreadsheets that we would be completing. Because had we seen those upload spreadsheets, we would have known that we could not download the information in order to upload those spreadsheets. Rather, the training was, when the day of the training, we see the sheet, and then we begin to figure out how we're gonna get the data in it. So these all led to the delay of the, um, of the project. But quite frankly, between the VRS change and the summer payroll complications, I don't necessarily think it was a, a bad thing. So I also brought Dwayne Gladie with me tonight, he is an R accountant, but, uh, I don't know, probably, unfortunately for him, we discovered after we hired him that he had been through two of these processes at, uh, in, in the, in the private business world. And he is our project manager. We did not hire anybody new to do this, because our school said we did not need to, but we certainly needed somebody like Dwayne. At this point, he probably dedicates eighty-five percent of his time to this project. So, uh, it was perfect timing when we hired him, but little did we know that this is what he was gonna have to do, but it's going to continue for several years, because we do not have, um, we do not have any RP analysts, we, we have Dwayne, and he's doing it all. So he will be able to answer any questions that anybody might have, which is why he's here.
The cost of the project, any change in that, or is it still at the same amount?
No, still the same amount, and because of the delay in the go-live. And because of the delay in the go-live, we renegotiated with them and our extended training that we asked for extra support. Once we, we have a component that we pay for for support after go-live because, you know, we're going to be live and we feel like we need extra support. That started in March, we had that delayed and extended. So they've been, they've been very, very easy to work with in that respect. And we do know that there's kind of a lock-in, there'll be a renewal. And there's, I believe the lock set that it includes a certain percentage increase every year, but it's a low percentage. So they were pretty transparent on their pricing, I don't think there are going to be any surprises.
Have these staff people are entering data?
You have Dwayne? If you remember, I had an accounts payable person, Cindy Galambos.
Yes.
She's working with us three days a week, doing just this project and doing a lot of data entry. She has been a workforce. And besides that, we have payroll in on the calls or we might have Rhonda in on the calls. We have other people in on the calls, but actually, accounts payable's been into, they pushed that forward back. But most of the data entry's been Cindy and Dwayne. And Justin has been doing some of the HR.
And then at some point, will we be able to add like time clocks to this system? And time clocks will communicate with this system?
They do have featured for attendance, time attendance, and that's down the list about that.
We did not purchase that on the, on the upstart, but that is an expansion for downflow. And because they do offer that, they offer almost a package for everything. They offer a package for school due, which Bobby uses and IT uses, which is a work order, maintenance order system. They offer a substitute system like we use Frontline, they offer their own with that. But they can also interface with Frontline, so we're going to continue to use Frontline at least for the foreseeable future and school due.
And they also, in order to date trading rate orders, they have a base for Talonet so all that, the tracking information can flow into.
I think they bought Talonet. That seems to be the pattern, I think they bought Talonet or, and so that feeds into what we already use as well.
Could you watch this from time to time, what's updated so we know what's happening?
Well, October 1st is close.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne.
Yes, thank you, thank you for that. We're going to learn about our exciting aerospace academy. Oh my gosh, another binder.
I want to make sure you have plenty of reading material for the summer. So now I have Ms. Farrell passing out the aerospace or the lab grant, actual grant itself that was approved. So I'm here to give an update and let you know that we have been finally approved for the Aerospace Academy of the Eastern Shore Lab Grant. Ahemack County, North Hampton County, and the Eastern Community College have been working on those grants for over two years due to multiple steps to the process. So some of you all may remember Patrick, he's the vice president of the Eastern Community College, who originally first came before the board just to get the initial approval to start the process over two years ago. It's just that to start the process, you actually had to apply for a planning grant and then from the planning grant, actually apply for the lab school, the grant. So it's been multiple steps. The hard work has paid off as we are one of 15 school divisions in the state of Virginia approved for this five-year grant. So again, I just want to make sure you all have a copy of it at your leisure, you know, just in a leaf or something where you can read it. But most importantly too, if you come across a question, please reach out. I can tell you right now, since we've been approved, we have definitely hit the ground running with meetings, anywhere from two to three meetings per week are scheduled. Well, I shouldn't say scheduled, when they say we're meeting, we meet. So Dr. Hall will tell you my calendar gets cleared quite frequently regardless because when I have these meetings, again, it's not just an Ahemack County meeting. It involves ODU, sometimes it involves the State Department, sometimes it involves the Governor's Office. So when they say we're meeting tomorrow morning at 8:30, I'm there, my coffee ready. There's not a lot of those sometimes, but that's okay, they're giving us $5 million, so I'll be there when we need. So for the next slide, well, for this slide here. So here's our mission and vision for the academy. Just a little background on our research. Virginia is a rapidly increasing home to the aerospace industry. The state's aerospace and unmanned systems industry workforce is projected to grow 8.5% during the next decade, according to the Secretary of Commerce and Trade Karen Merritt, with an economic impact of greater than $2 billion for the Eastern Shore. The establishment academy in Ahemack and North Hampton Counties where the poverty rate exceeds 40% and the past two decades have seen a diminishing population can significantly contribute to the region's economic growth. An educated and trained workforce can help bring aerospace supply chain business to the Eastern Shore. This is a strategic response to the critical workforce need in our community and we are directly aligning with regional economic trends and job market trends. All right, so for our pathways. Our educational approach for the Aerospace Academy is aligned with our lab school approach and continues with our focus on innovative and research-supported design that also provides a training ground for aspiring and current educators. In partnership with our district, education industry, and other partners, we plan to utilize student-guided learning, STEM integration, and experiential learning to equip students with the skills needed for high-demand aerospace industry jobs. We are the only approved lab school that does not have a centralized tech center, so we've had to be creative with the grant. The students will attend the academy from their home school, with some students in-person and virtual classes. Throughout their school experience, students will have the opportunities to engage in site visits and other experiential learning opportunities in order to engage with and be prepared for the aerospace industry careers. Students in the Aerospace Academy starting in ninth grade and launching fall of 2025, with an additional grade added each year, we will have two pathways. Aerospace Information and Security Systems or the Aerospace Engineering and Exploration. Additionally, in the Aerospace Engineering and Exploration pathway, students can specialize in aerospace engineering and computer science or in unmanned aircraft and US battle technology. Just a few of the components of the planning for this year. We are looking at developing a process for recruiting, student application, rubric for acceptance, and delivery of the instruction. Also, the enrollment for the program is up as a lottery to all Virginia students to be able to enroll in a course. So for example, a student from Newport News could get in one of the programs over one of the Eastern Shore students. That is one of the many logistics we will be working out. And again, that, we just found out, we thought it was only going to be an Eastern Shore lottery, so this is something that we have a meeting with the State Department on. All 15 lab schools are up for lottery, so an Eastern Shore student could also apply to one of the other lab schools in another division. But the logistics is what we need to work out. Because for example, if we're doing aerospace here, obviously we have a lot of hands-on things that we'll be doing with NASA. We might be doing with ODU, might be doing with Mars, just depends, could do a rocket lab, can a Newport News student get here for it? And if so, is it their expense not ours? So it's a lot of logistics we got to work out with it. But we want to make it clear that the other component too is because of virtual classes where we don't have a tech center to bring them all in to make sure we can definitely have face-to-face, also open this up to more of the lottery. So, but we are working on logistics with all of us. So we've been engaging with businesses and industry partners to understand the workforce needs in the aerospace industry and around innovative learning opportunities for our students. As we move into the upcoming year, we have a lot of planning, professional development, and many other tasks to accomplish. For example, we currently have a couple of teachers that have enrolled in cybersecurity classes to be credentialed to teach the program. We know staffing is one of our biggest barriers, so we're trying to hit the ground running. And that was one of the biggest barriers that we have set since day one is finding teachers to actually be able to teach the program. Because obviously, the more teachers we can have to teach face-to-face, the less it's virtual, which slims down the line. During the design phase of our proposed academy, we had an opportunity to connect with different industry professionals to discuss powerful learning experiences for our students that will provide them a solid foundation for their future. Lab school students will have an opportunity to earn dual enrollment credits through the Eastern Community College as well as ODU-specific college credits. With that, what I mean is, and according to legislation, every high school has to be in contract with a local community college in order for students to get dual enrollment credit that is transferable to a university. They cannot just go to a university. So for example, if the Eastern Community College, and we've already done that now, if they have a class that we want to offer that they don't have, they will contract it out maybe to Tidewater Community College or they'll contract it out to Old Dominion so their students can still get the college credit that would be transferable. We are designing the academy in a way that provides students with a work-based experiences and opportunities to network with potential employers. Our students will be able to leave the academy with college career and citizen ready, contributing to a thriving aerospace industry. The academy represents our commitment to our students' futures, to our community's economic health, and helping cultivates Virginia's aerospace industry. Our budget represents the need to provide innovative and robust educational programs for students, including summer learning experiences and in-person and virtual learning opportunities. As you can see, they are, you don't see all the zeros, but basically it's budgeted out for about a million dollars per year over the course of the five years. We also anticipate needing to spend focused amounts of time around curriculum development, learning design, and design or implementation of the programming. Because of the uniqueness of this learning design, we intend to bring in different learning partners to help us as we develop our curriculum design and instructional approach. ODU has been phenomenal, especially these last few months, helping us with the grant and with the offerings that they can offer. But also NASA has an educational department that they are also helping us to work out what we need for education classes through NASA. Our ODU lab school network design has focused squarely on sustainability. ODU has committed to investing in our lab school efforts, including providing personnel resources, physical commitments, and other resources like those facilities and technology in order to help ensure the sustainability of our lab schools. As you can see, we will need to be able to sustain the program starting on year six. So we will need to look at how we're going to do that in our own county budget. Or most importantly, what ODU's goal is and what they're great at doing is actually finding additional grant funds, partners, the people that could help fund it so that we should hopefully, on year six, be very minimal of what we would need to actually use out of county funds. Next slide. Our outcomes, our outcomes are already a current goal to us, to meet the CCCRI indicator by having more students enrolled in an AP or enrollment class and getting work-based learning experience. We feel this will definitely be achievable outcomes for the aerospace cohorts. And as you can see there with the goal, we definitely found that to be very achievable. I know the numbers seem high, but now that is part of our accreditation, it's already been one of our number-one goals this year when we saw how it impacted us with a couple of the schools not quite being where we wanted to be. But also, students that take sequential CTE classes and get credential out of CTE class can also need it too, so we would be able to meet that as well. The next slide. So moving forward, within the upcoming month, we have several committees to form and ODUs to create and sign and two positions to hire so that we can achieve many, to meet our goals in a timely manner. I know this was a lot to review, but as we speak, updates are constantly being done to make the academy be successful. And literally, as we speak, it's just a constant. So for example, just today, we had the opportunity to meet with three other school districts and what their grants are and to start as a united front, not just us for our own lab school, but to look at other lab schools which are doing totally different things, just to put our ideas together, start working out logistics and kinks because we're really, you know, we're all in it together. A lot of us have the same kinds of barriers and issues and what can we do to work together throughout the region too? Right now, it's just been a region two we've worked with, but then obviously we'll expand to others too. So, any questions?
I'm just, I'm just, a real quick comment. I know this is a lot, and but Ms. Taylor just told us this a lot, but I would really like you all to be as familiar with this as you can be and sort of be. So if people ask you about it, you can talk it up. I think it, it's going to be wonderful, it's going to be so good for our students and give them a really great opportunity. So you can just sort of be knowledgeable so that you've given the opportunity, you can sort of talk about it with people and be like ambassadors for it.
And as it goes by, I will either come before the boards to give you all updates or if nothing else, at least email you all in the group so that you all can also get more updates so that way when you all are able to talk to other people and try to help us recruit students. Because our goal for the fall 2025 between Ahemack and North Hampton is to have a minimum of 50 students enrolled in one or the other of the career pathways.
So, a couple of questions. One, is this area for building in other divisions throughout the state?
So we just got approved a couple of weeks ago and this is just starting, so we have.
So no other divisions in the state have, this is all starting?
It's only 15 schools, divisions that were approved for a lab school program.
For fall 2025, so?
Yes.
And so you were saying that you would, so could someone get in in seventh grade and plan a study? And so in ninth grade, they would go to it? Or did you say it starts in ninth grade and then the lab offers you?
The application process will start when they go to enter into ninth, so they'll get the application at eighth grade. So that's where, again, I'm glad they're already doing J-Inspire for Ahemack, North Hampton. I'm hoping we'll get in with the Tidewater region because that's where they would connect. So that way, we've already got eighth graders exploring it, but now we need to work with our school counselors for the seventh grade and do more of that career exploration with our seventh graders so they can already be thinking of not just these careers, but other careers.
Because they had to plan a study for seventh and eighth grade, they wouldn't be in the program, but if they want to be in the program, they should take this course of study. So in ninth grade, they might be.
Right, and also in seventh grade is when we start looking at students as far as placement when it comes to like advanced math courses and advanced English classes. So we already do that already.
This sounds great. You won't let me ask an unfair question. So a capstone project, right, at the 12th grade, you know, way downstream, are we thinking we probably don't have to rely on those partners to help with that?
So we go look with our partners, we look at requirements and what other division things are doing to try to have some consistency. And I will say, even writing the grant itself, we looked at other divisions, how they were writing their grants, and kind of used each other as a guide. So that way too, when, it had to go before two different committees to get approved. The last one, I think, will be the tougher one because that was more the Governor's Office involved in that. But what they see, how we're kind of all doing it the same, I can think of.
The one thing about this is that this year is not planning here, so you're with North Hampton and agreement out and building the curriculum, so.
One question. Ms. Taylor, I don't think I understand what you're talking about, the lottery-based thing.
Okay.
So, and just a quick question, are we saying that students from all over the state could put into this program?
Yes.
And are we guaranteeing a certain number of slots or did we end up with one kid and all of them?
Correct.
Okay, that answered my question.
That, that was actually what I, we got hit with last week in one of our meetings that we had. And of course, for Ahemack and North Hampton, we were quick to put the break on and say, wait a minute, you know, this is the Eastern Shore grant.
If you ended North Hampton equivalent of Ms. Taylor or putting this curriculum together with Eastern Community College and Old Dominion, you know, we should have at least a certain number of slots.
That's the logistics that we have a meeting set up with this, one of the assistant superintendent for the BDOE, who we've been working very closely with, he's been, he's been great to help us work that logistic out too. Because it won't just be our school division, it's going to be the other 15 divisions too that were approved to figure out theirs. The only thing a little bit more unique is not too many people are coming across the bridge north or south to come to ours. Whereas, like today, we were on the Norfolk and Newport News. If you're over there, you might be more apt to cross over to one of their school zones. So therefore, yeah, you could be definitely taking a spot from them. I don't know too many that's going to really truly travel to the Eastern Shore, so hopefully, our kids will.
Because a lot of the public has built a lot of hands-on, onsite, so we've built this with like on, through. So, we built it through NASA and places like that. But we did find out all the, all of our pathways, because one day, because we, we didn't realize that our kids, as Karen was saying, can participate in maybe the other fourteen max. We didn't know that I knew.
They can?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's just going to depend.
Lottery-based with all fifteen?
Correct, lottery-based with all fifteen, but obviously-
Which is going to be just-
Our pathways are definitely hands-on kind of pathways. Some of the other school divisions are not so much. And in fact, some of the other school divisions, like Norfolk, Ms. Turner and Dr. Hall was on to the first committee meeting that we had when we got to actually get to hear theirs. Theirs is actually for elementary schools. It's not for middle and high. So, they ha, are going to use their tech center that their secondary has, and they're going to take our elementary kids to their tech center to do a specific STEM program, which I think is great because then you're really building that from, you know, younger ages on up. So, that leaves them definitely for a lot of potential for programs, which Ms. Taylor and I talked, and we really want to see more, hopefully, in the future with our elementary and middle as well, since we have the CalRIP in the foundation. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, Dr. Hope's going to give us a little review of the preliminary.
So, I am not Karen, so she probably could present this whole lot better than me. But what you have before you is preliminary data. It is not all there. We still have SOL data coming in from this summer, and that hasn't been coded in there yet. We still have bats that are not in this data because it is preliminary data. Also, substitute tests where our reading and writing are not in here, and they will greatly impact our community high school, manual high school, and Shattuck High School. So, attendance is not included of course in here. And CCCRI, that's the college career specifics ready and, ready in the data. All that's not in here. So, she's going to come in for your office, and by then, she'll have a lot of the information from the summer. But as you can see here, Acmac, the leading pass rate, they need eighty to eighty percent with the data that we have now, back at eighty-three percent, signed seventy-five, and history pass rate is sixty-nine. So, they were down a little bit in history. However, all the other areas did meet the benchmark. So, you can see where we are, and you can see the areas that we have some holes. One of our schools, I'm looking at, Pennington, gives us some concern this year. So, we're going to have to make sure we've met with that staff, the principal and the assistant principal, and they'll talk about looking at how we're going to help them improve, especially in the area of science, the science field, and, and, and history. So, that's one of the schools that we're going to keep an eye on this year. Arcadia Middle School, once we get all of our final data in and we look at the green, yellow, and red, because that school is the only school we have in the division that is accredited with conditions. And so, if they have not made benchmarks like they should have this year, we could drop. But I think when we were talking with this, afraid, which she had, she was hoping that they may attend, which we have, they may ten percent growth, which should, might not impact them. We have to wait until all the data is then before we look at, we see that. So, you can see at the middle schools, both middle schools, science is a factor, a factor in this year's SOL testing. But that's just a brief overview, as you can see there, of our data from this point. And as I said, when we get more data in, this will be updated. And then you'll be able to see when she gets everything, which schools are in red, which I hope kind of are, which schools are in yellow, and which schools are in the green, whatever's stuck. So, it was something to what really determines our evaluation for us. Questions about that? The next slide, here, is credit recovery. So, this guy was, was asking about credit recovery because we've heard, most of you have heard the term credit recovery several times. And it's used different at the elementary level than it is used at the high school and the middle school level. At the elementary level, credit recovery, we didn't really use credit recovery until this past year. In January, the video EP out there, using credit recovery. And we use our Success Academy and our after-school program to kind of, as a remediation, to decrease our attendance. And that's how credit recovery is used at the elementary school, is used to help our attendance. So, in K five, elementary students must attend two hours of flexible in-person instruction time to increase total absence by one day. So, if I have, for instance, I've missed twenty days of school. So, then I can come on Saturday, or I can come for the Success Academy, or I can come stay after school for the two hours, and then that's going to help me with, they're going to be ducked back. They never did before, be ducked. If you had hours, if you missed a day, it was a day. But now, if you miss some days, then they go back and look at the hours, and a certain amount of hours that we need up from that. So, that's how we use credit recovery in the elementary school. High school is totally different, totally different. We use the credit recovery also, and that's been a big help for attendance and attendance appeals. So, a student that exceeds five days of absences for a semester class, or ten days for a year-long class, can participate in credit recovery as part of the attendance appeals. So, students that complete credit recovery hours after school or during Saturday Success Academy, they have to go with a content partner. And they look at those, and starting in twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, as they do with elementary, the DOE will exempt one day for every three hours of credit recovery that you do. So, in fact, it's a big plus for our high school students. Also, when we were looking at SOL testing with credit recovery, it has to be completed after school with the content teacher. And if a student passes in his SOL class in a previous semester, but they did not pass the SOL, SOL test, they can retake the test the next semester. However, the student will need to complete eight hours of credit recovery remediation before they can retake the test. So, credit recovery is used anytime you're failing some class, and so you can go back and kind of make it up. It's been around for a long time, but now they're using it in various ways to help students make up for classes or grades that, classes that they're failing. So, of course, credit recovery at high school, if a student fails a class by a grade earned, not by attendance, they, they may recover it to course credit. The student may attend summer school or is a rising senior, and they need to be enrolled in a fifth class virtually. If a student, for example, if a student fails English eleven but passes the required SOLs, then the student could go to summer school or take the course their senior year, then modify that version. And those are some of the ways that we do credit recovery.
And students do this in person?
Yes, they do it in person.
So, they're, they're there in classroom?
So, like at Arcadia High School, Leslie was basically one of the people who did credit recovery up there. And you have the doctor, you have the law man. And they, I know that when they had Saturday school, we had a lot of data. More than the library with credit recovery. But they kind of changed some of the standards because it had to be with a content teacher who were needed for your attendance.
Anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Do we have any students that want to, to go to the next where you do the lab credits?
Karen, I don't think so. We, we don't see that they're all good. Because believe it or not, those teachers and those high school guidance counselors and principals really, really don't want to hold the kids back. And they try to encourage them to, I mean, we had a kid, and I know that all of you were talking, that had to be recovered almost right before graduation. We had one student, I don't know if it was, it was at Arcadia. They finished everything at about three forty-five, or what was they did, about three forty-five, four o'clock? Before graduation was at six, like, I'm serious. I think that really was pushing it. Yes.
Two more number comments. Let's start with you.
I'm good, because I've set it up. I'd like to say, I can ask a question to the board, the chairman chair. Since we've been on the board for seven months, whatever, we had a roller coaster of the seven months, I think, of dog issues, housekeeping and stuff. I would like to ask my fellow board members, what new ideas you guys have had moving forward in this new upcoming school year, whatever, that we can work together to pass or make the education better in Acmac?
That's a big question. I mean, you certainly can ask it. I don't, we, we could, people can try and respond, but they might-
They might have more responses next, the next week.
Our new idea of some sort. I'll put mine out there, whatever. I would love it at some point, put your ones back in place. So, that's just mine, so.
Mr. Chair.
So, although I think I might have, if you can, still into the schools for my own professional reasons, I do look forward to us going back right now. I'd love that interaction to happen with the board. So, in terms of new ideas, I hope that as we, together as this board, have those experiences, that it will actually, you know, I, I would think it would be interesting for you to ask us how to, you know, you think things are going, right, in the district after we've been out there, because middle schools tend to show up different. The other idea, well, the idea that I have is, perhaps it's because, quite frankly, my brain is on overload right now. Each of these topics on tonight is so very important, and it's like I've got all these wheels turning on one, and then I've got to shift to something else. So, here's the idea. It would, perhaps it's ideal, we need, if we could have like themed agenda, right, so that we could have a train of thought. That's one, one idea.
We're comparing all of each other's.
Anybody else?
I would like for us as a board to really look into the disciplinary bullying that's in our schools.
Yes, sir, I feel like one's wrong.
Like bullying, bullying in schools?
Yes.
Our baby and bee pins, I think we really need to address that. I think it's becoming, it's grown at a fast rate. That's affecting our kids. And I think we need to, as a board, come together, figure out what we can do to not only support administration, but to, to help our kids. These kids are, we don't know what baby's going to do to our kids in ten years. We'll be finding out how bad it is. I mean, there's, lung's just still developing. So, I really feel like we, as a board, have a real big responsibility that we need to look into this, and we need to address it and do whatever we can to support our, our administration.
Second, we had said that with, with the baby, you know, so with the bullying, we've gotten an O L W E act that, right? Well, I don't believe this, this, this is a good program, we agree it, but it has to be here too.
And to say another thing, I don't want to say more of that, but I think we need to look into, we need to reach out to maybe our legislature. When I was growing up, left school for the day or for the weekend, you didn't have any issues. Now, I feel like kids can't get away from the bullying. When they go home, all the time, the social media platforms. And I feel like if a child of being bullied in school, and it continues on when they're home, it's still affecting them. Doesn't matter if they're in the walls or our school's out. And I feel like we need to come together, whether we need to reach out to the legislature or what. But if it's happening at home or in school, if it's happening at home, we need to do something about it to protect our kids, because it's, it's not going, while they're still feeling the effects.
I would just add, you know, you said like uniforms. I think bullying in uniforms kind of goes, goes aside or whatever. I mean, the first thing the kids do, you know, kids, for me, is judge somebody wearing clothes that they wear. And I feel personally that if, and I didn't grow up wearing uniforms where I went to school at, but I just think I've seen several cases, whatever, where people get bullied about what they wear. Everybody in the same clothes, and with, they would go into your hair or something, but the clothes and your status of being poor or had money or whatever has always been a plague forever. Unless, you know, I think uniforms would help with that. I'm not saying it's going to resolve every issue, but I think it would be in the right direction.
I just got one comment, it's- I guess, I can say, this supposed to be a board. We are not, we are not acting like a board. We, basically, we got section over here, section over there, people talking back and forth. We need to get everybody to talk as one and communicate each other. I know they say don't be sending emails. We need to know, some of the stuff we're finding at the last minute, on the day of the meeting. If we need to know some stuff, let's get it out soon, so everybody knows. Don't be late at the last minute. And I still, two candidates, we, we're diverse, forward. We need to diverse on everything that goes on in the, in the school system. We just, we are here to help everyone. So, that's all I have to say.
I have the privilege of being on the Acmac Department School Office Committee. We met the other last week. Sixty-five percent drawings. Everything's looking good. I think that the floor plan that's going to work for, for both sides, I guess, academic side and on the extra side, it looks like they did a smooth flow. Site plans are looking good. They're figuring out water and sewer and store water and apartment. And it's, it's coming along. I think that hopefully we'll have something to maybe put out some bids, maybe by the end of the year and before that, but it's looking good.
Just to respond kind of to Mr. Webber's question about what we want to accomplish. My, my passion has always been to have students involved in the community. So, that they are aware of what resources we have in the community and, and for them to take part in things. That's why we spearheaded a couple of different things. One of the things that's still going on is we have like election pages. And the students are, it's a formal program. Someone comes through the board elections and trades the children. They work in halls on Election Day. But that's why I'm very excited about the lab program. I just feel like that's another opportunity for them to be at NASA. And the more the kids can get out in the community and see what's going on. Because they don't, not everybody gets to go to places and do stuff. So, the more that we can expose them to, they just kind of always, you know, have a passion. So, the more that we can partner with community organizations and things like that. The more, to me, the more the better, so.
I just wanted to say, I've really enjoyed tonight's meeting in terms of information that I've received. Some of it was kind of, I'm not going to say my side, but I, I wasn't expecting certain things to happen. I wasn't expecting to get certain information, but a lot of the very good information. I'm real hopeful about the allied security program coming to the school system. I do have, I guess, two questions. One, I just kind of wanted to get an update on the IT building or the renovations to the building for the IT department. And also to inquire, I guess, Ms. Taylor's question, I think she's gone, about the school list. People have been asking me why the lists aren't in the Walmart yet. I, I don't know. yet, I, I don't know.
So that question, when you asked me that part, I did ask about it. And I was told that for elementary, the lists are out there. High school or middle school, a lot of times they don't give lists out, um, and they just, like no shame to say, they don't usually give lists out. I think what you do is you can contact the school and ask them if they have it, but they don't post it in Walmart, places like that, like the elementary, um, schools do.
That's good information. Because everybody's looking for it, it's like, okay, thank you. Oh, the I T building?
I'll just quick up, thanks, we're on schedule, we're, all demos done, we're back to rebuilding, uh, doing electrical and everything, working closely with Jack, and making sure we got the provisions in place, but we're on schedule to have it done and ready, and servers moved and everything before September third.
I check that, I said, I goodbye every morning, and every afternoon, and it's, it's coming along, and they got that drive-through area, like it's closed and stuff, so it's, it's looking good.
Well, I don't really prepare their marks, but I, I will just say, um, if, if we want to improve um, the education for our kids, um, the two big things that I'm really passionate about and um, are just trying to um, scratch the surface right now, but, but um, one is discipline, um, finding new um, kind of better and more innovative ways to, to help our students who are challenged um, with managing behavior, and also um, special education. We have a lot of work to do, um, that we haven't really started yet, um, in supporting the students, um, who probably need special education, and who are already in it. And um, so those are, those are things to, to look forward to, to expect, um, in the future, that, that I'm going to be participating in and pushing to, to work on, so.
I don't have any comments?
I'm just going to say, I thought Karen's program on um, the Success Academy was pretty exciting, and it's a good opportunity for our students.
Um, I did upload it on the board, um, because I wanted to make sure I shared, and because last year at this time, at this meeting, I came before this board, and I presented my itinerary of what my first four hundred days as superintendent of Arcadia Public Schools would look like. And it included, um, including the list of my goals for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, which, um, these goals included establishing a collaborative relationship with stakeholders, accomplishing the school while organizing, advising, and conducting monthly meetings with the parent advisory, teacher advisory, community leader advisory, and student advisory committee. I also held a two-day retreat on building level administrators and central office staff in the division to build collaboration and to provide time for networking and sharing ideas. The student code of conduct handbook was developed, which placed a major focus on policies, which gave parents and families guidelines and regulations that govern our division. The handbook was user-friendly, understandable, and very well with all stakeholders. Another goal was to improve academic performance, and um, meeting for help in September with building level administrators to discuss their comprehensive needs assessment based on several data sets, such as attendance, discipline, and academic performance. We also discussed their school improvement plan. Another meeting was held at mid-year to discuss progress, to make adjustments or changes to the school improvement plan. Another goal, um, for the review that I talked about was to establish an effective working relationship with the school board. In November, I met with all school board members individually to discuss their goals for me and Arcadia Public Schools. After the November induction, I met with the three new members of the board, and I asked a series of questions regarding what their vision for the division was. I also gave each newly elected member a new board member's handbook. So highlights of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Um, I'm extremely proud of the staff and students at Arcadia County, a lot of firsts happened during this school year. The following are highlights of my first year, and this item, the items are not listed in any specific order. So I was instrumental in putting metal detectors in our buildings to provide a major layer of safety to all schools, um, to reduce the number of after-school suspensions in elementary schools. We put two alternative to suspension programs, um, were implemented in the division. For the first time, a budget committee was implemented, which included a variety of stakeholders to include board members. Um, increasing the starting salary beyond what was given by the state budget to attract that became teachers. Presentations to the board supervisors titled State of the School Division and Implementation of Torrance Teams to Monitor Attendance. We met with Cuban on court judge, discussed the division's plans for Torrance attendance at a two-day administrative retreat. I organized and informed a teacher, parent, community leader, and student advisory committee. I suggested to the school board in my November February update to file policy B V B B, student representative to the school board, and to consider placing a student on the school board. In January, the new board adopted the policy, the process was filed, and in April, two senior became members of the school board. Weekly Friday updates were sent to all board members. Texts, emails, and calls were um, to all, to board members when necessary, to further keep board members informed. I participated in several V S D A virtual workshops during the British School Law Title Nine, and new members and superintendents workshops. I participated in several vast professional workshops and conferences. Conferences including legislative updates, summer following straight conferences. I participated in new superintendent meetings, either in person or virtual. I participated in one week, region two superintendent meetings. Legislative, I was the legislative representative for region two with the state legislative committee. I accepted student engagement for several community agencies to discuss Arcadia Public Schools, such as Fire Sign Chat with the Eastern Shore World Health. I remember our recommendation and attention and improving bonus to assist with teacher turnover. I attended individual school activities and events, including sports. I monitored individual school academic data and suggestions for improvement. Conducted walkthroughs in our buildings with other central office staff. Helped monthly informative principals meeting, helped weekly cabinet meetings, included staff presentations at board meetings, on board agendas for informational purposes and updates. I held board agenda meetings to discuss topics for discussion and collaborate with the board chair, writing the agenda. Monthly meetings, or held with the county administrator. I participated in the high school graduation programs, and delivered a superintendent's message to the graduates. Organized and worked with a group of stakeholders to write the division's A I policy. Presented new policies in a manner which gave board members a summary of new or revised policies. Provided administrators with a daily V S D A newsletter and any relevant P D O E information. Recommended specific professional development opportunities to administrators and teachers. I introduced the PRISM, Virtual Reality Math Program, to improve math teachers in the division, to get the input regarding the program. I presented the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year calendar to the board for a focal before January, to assist with planning and scheduling for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. I participated in the Media Literacy Act for professional development for administrators and central office staff. I worked on Hampton County staff, the Eastern Shore Community College, to write a lab school grant, which was approved. Met with staff at Mars, this is the space lab on Watts, to discuss partnerships. Presented students and staff to the school board for recognition of performances. Organized a task force to resume Montana Elementary, which made a change in attendance lines for all elementary schools. Conducted and shared research related to start times for high school students, survey candidates and staff regarding this issue. Helped the first town hall meeting, discuss possible changes in start times. Monitor planning year for the N M D C C, that's the community R O T C. Initiated and implemented a division-wide girls' home run, Hampton Beach program, and attended the run with the girls. Worked with special ed director and team to plan the division's first special events. Worked with social worker and teams to plan the division's first camp university. I held meetings with instructional leadership staff to discuss academic and social emotional needs of students. Created a central office evaluation tool, which is aligned with superintendent and teacher evaluation tools. Wars and Girls Club, Hampton Beach, to write the twenty-first century grant for Arcadia County. So there's some things that happened this, my first year. Moving forward to twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, a major focus will be monitoring efficiency and the operations of all schools and requirements. Continued academic progress monitoring, continued implementation of activities from twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school years, such as the Special Olympics and Arcadia University. Restructured classroom monitoring of special ed. Implement the N M D C C at Arcadia High School, this is our planning year for the lab school. Fully implement the I Teach Alternative Route License Program, utilizing the teacher quality mentor coach. Provide another layer of safety at each school, using security officers. Organizing task force to assist with the development of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-nines for teaching plan. Monitor closely teacher quality and I Teach program. So this is a few of the things that I plan to do for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. So as I said, I continue in July to present what I would do my first year, and I just felt like, as a summary, uh, summary, I would review, um, some highlights of what did happen for this school.
Thank you. Board will now adjourn to close session.
The board will adjourn to closing meeting as allowed by section two point two, that's thirty-seven.